Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, councillors, officers. Welcome to our 2021 town meeting. For those who haven't met me before, and I think all the councillors have met me, I'm Tony Hunt. I was co-opted on to the council in May 2019. Ten months later, surprisingly, I was elected as mayor, just in time for the Covid pandemic, which has kind of been a bit of a baptism of fire. We've called this town meeting at very short notice because of a change in government rules. So, thank you for coming. And I also would like to thank Canon David Parmeter and his team, who have allowed us to hold tonight's meeting in this beautiful cathedral, where we can socially distance and be safe. This is a small gathering, but in Arundel, we've always gone for quality rather than quantity. We have some very interesting speakers tonight, and I hope we're going to have a good meeting together. As always, there's a few words of housekeeping. The cathedral have asked that we wear masks, except when we're speaking, unless there are medical reasons for not doing so. If you ask a question during the evening, Lesley will race around the cathedral with her roving microphone. She's been training for this event for weeks, so I hope you're going to give plenty of exercise. And we're attempting to film this meeting, so it can be shared more widely. But we don't want to end up on YouTube like Hanforth Parish Council and Julie Weaver, so we'll all try and behave. Our first task this evening is to adopt the 2019 report. And I know that will seem like a historic event, because we didn't know about Wuhan, Corona was a beer in those days, but I'm going to ask John Bradley, councillor John Bradley, to kindly propose that for us. John?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to present the report from the annual town meeting of Arundel, held in the town hall on Wednesday the 15th of May 2019. At that meeting, there was a speech from Isabel Johnston from Arundel First Brownies, Lucy Ashworth gave a report on her period as mayor from 2018 to 2019, Andy Batty, who it's super to see this evening, talked to us about the Arundel trade and cultural offer. And there was a talk from James Stewart, Chair of the Arundel Neighbourhood Plan, before questions were taken from the public. So I would like to propose this report to councillors for approval.
Can I have a show of hands, of those who believe that's an accurate record of the meeting, please? For those who can remember it. Thank you very much. Does anybody believe it's not an accurate record? No? Thank you. Town clerk, we have a meeting approved. John, thank you very much. That brings us on to our report for the year. And for me, the highlight of last year was very simply seeing the way that our Arundel community responded to the pandemic. Many people did wonderful things to help their friends, to help their neighbours, and to help perfect strangers during that pandemic. At the end of last year, when it came to presenting the community awards, we did something different. Instead of choosing one person in the community, we gave awards to all the people and organisations whom Arundel residents had identified as going above and beyond to make life better during the pandemic. That included people who sowed PPP, PPE at home, the post office, which stayed open through lockdown, the postal workers who kept our mail coming through our letterboxes, the retailers, many of whom in Arundel didn't just sell food to us, but they actually delivered food to those who were self-isolating, and they provided support in all sorts of different ways for people who were otherwise quite isolated. It included the Biffa team, who kept our streets clean throughout lockdown, the St Nicholas Community volunteers, who shopped and collected prescriptions for people self-isolating, our two absolutely brilliant primary schools, who learnt to put on a four-days' school life online for children. And if you tried the year six maths papers, you know how difficult some of them were. But they did a brilliant job that would have put a lot of companies to shame at the speed with which they did it. There were the Brownies and the Rainbow Leaders, who managed to run weekly meetings on Zoom to help keep the girls' morale up. And we had an enormous number of parents write to us to tell us how effective that had been. So in the town hall, we now have a beautiful scroll, which records the service of all those people and organisations last year. And we know that those names represent many others in Arundel, who went above and beyond last year, and indeed into this year. And I don't want to move on without also recognising how many other people give great service to us in this town. Photographers like Charlie Waring, who's here tonight, and Nigel Cole, our Bell editor Jill Farkerson, because those three people between them create a wonderful record of this town's life. And I also look at the members of Akin, the creative people there, the graphic designers, who very often make their professional skills available, free of any charge, to the community and to things going on in this community. And as somebody recently said, we have in Arundel enormous resources of human capital. So what about the council? What did we do while all this was going on? Well, we felt a bit helpless at first. We didn't know what to do, we couldn't meet. In fact, we only had our first physical meeting for 12 months, only last week. What could we do? What could we do in this situation? So we set ourselves an objective, which was to find all the ways we could to help residents and businesses come safely through the pandemic. We worked very closely with St Nicholas Parish Church, who organised the community volunteer hub, and I'm going to say nothing more, because we have two of our speakers tonight, who know much more about this than I do. We supported the start of Arundel Community Aid, which operates as a virtual food bank in Arundel. Two years ago, Arundel didn't need a food bank. Arundel now has people calling on a food bank to support them, and we believe that there are other people who really could benefit from that support, who we're trying to reach out to. We worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce to place social distancing and face mask signage around the town. And I would like to pay tribute to the work that Sharon Blakely, the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce, did in getting those posters into shop windows. We also worked with the Chamber of Commerce to secure government funding for the shop safely in Arundel Christmas campaign, to judge the window display competitions. There were some brilliant window displays at Christmas, which really brightened up what looked like being quite a dark Christmas at one time, and to judge the Christmas card competition. On a personal note, if I had to choose my absolute highlight of the year, it was judging the Christmas card competitions and seeing the Christmas cards designed by all of the children at our two Arundel primary schools, laid out on the floor of the town hall. We have some great young artistic talent in Arundel, and those cards were absolutely wonderful. More recently, in January, we worked with Surgery, because everybody in Arundel was becoming worried that somehow we'd been left out of the vaccination programme, we didn't know what was going on. And we worked out with Surgery to let everybody know how the vaccinations would be arranged, and we managed to do a doorstep delivery of the notification across Arundel, between three o'clock one afternoon and 10 o'clock the next morning, which is the fastest we've ever done it. So Covid kept everyone in Arundel busy last year, including us. But despite Covid, we managed to get some other things done too. Farmers market, working group have done a fantastic job. We now have twice as many stores. We all have a chance to shop locally, in the open air, thanks to the help of our volunteer marshals. Sue Rodrick, our community events manager, who's here tonight, has done a wonderful job in press-ganging volunteers and persuading them that they're enjoying themselves. We supported the Bee Project too, with the community atrium now sited in the orchard and the pollinators garden completed. And we have Nick Field, who's going to speak to us about that project in a little while. The tidal defence work has been completed. It cost between seven and eight million pounds in the end, of which the town council contributed 64,000 pounds, and hopefully that will keep us safe from tidal flooding in the years to come. With our tree warden, Bob Tanner, and the Arundel Gardens Association, we found sponsors for 35 new lime trees on Mill Road, and we've now set up the Arundel Tree Fund, which will be doing some new planting this autumn. We had a very successful clean-up day and discovered the best place to find unopened beer cans is at the bottom of London Road. So if you participate in the community clear-up and want to find some unopened beer cans, ask if you can have the London Road spot. We do have another clean-up day coming on the 12th of June, which happens to be the Queen's birthday. But if you're not going to her birthday party, please contact the office if you can help. Another working group, Andy Batty once again involved with this, has launched the campaign to get safe cycling and walking pathway between Arundel and Ford. If we get a following wind and everything goes our way, serious design work would have started by this time next year, fingers crossed. We've seen the Canada Park playground as skateboard park completely refurbished, both projects which we jointly funded with ADC. And although events fell by the wayside this year, we did find respectful, Covid-safe ways to mark VE Day, VJ Day, Remembrance Sunday and Remembrance Day. Very different this year. We couldn't have any of the normal gatherings, but some people commented that they found the low-key events more poignant. Now, all of this has only been possible because of the hard work of the council's officers and staff and the councillors, often working remotely on Zoom. We've all learnt to say, "You're on mute" in unison. But they've managed to make things happen despite all these difficulties. And finally, the council benefited enormously this year from residents who have joined working groups and brought expertise, energy and enthusiasm to them, enabling us to get more done. There are working groups on almost every aspect of life in this town. And you can find all the details on the town council website. So if you have time and enthusiasm, please contact the office, and they'll put you in touch with the group. Well, that's really the report on Arundel in 2020. Basically, do we have any questions at this stage about what I've just said? If we have any general questions, maybe we'll deal with them in the questions section at the end. Are there any questions that anybody would like to raise at this stage? Excellent, good. Right, well, at this stage, what I would like to do is I would like to hand over to Canon David Twindley and Fiona Maxwell, who have played a pivotal part in the way in which Arundel has dealt with the Covid pandemic. So, David, Fiona, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Canon David Twindley. I'm the vicar of Arundel's parish church. And in early March 2020, I saw that there was a likelihood that the more vulnerable members of our church community might have to self-isolate, although I don't think that's a term I'd come across at that time. And so on the 8th of March in church, on a Sunday morning, I asked for volunteers, in case we needed to do any shopping or fetch medicines, that kind of thing. And a group of people willingly came forward. And during the next week, we set up a very simple structure that would be able to manage the volunteers with those in need. Of course, as we know, within a couple of weeks, we all went into lockdown. And I was determined from the very beginning to extend our small initiative to the whole of the town. It was very good to be able to talk to Mark Phillips, because Mark was able to open up a way of communicating our need of volunteers to the wider town. And within a few days, we had dozens and dozens of volunteers coming forward. The next thing was to get the message out that we were ready and able to help. And I'm very grateful to the town council for their help in coming up with a leaflet that was posted to addresses throughout the town. I'm very grateful for all the help that people have put into this. It was a strange time in those early days. I had lots of phone calls to the vicarage from people from across the country, some of them hundreds of miles away, in tears, fearful about their relatives. What sort of help could they give? What was available locally? And it was so wonderful for me to be able to say, "Don't worry, don't worry. I'm here, we're here, and we are ready and willing to help." And during this last year, we have, as a team, been able to help many, many people. To give you an idea of some of the details, I'm going to hand over to my colleague Fiona.
Okay, so, Community Support Hub fax. Approximately 200 volunteers, with roughly 300 people requesting help. Once paired up with someone who requested assistance, the volunteer has remained with them, and many are still together. Now, these are only mentioned in our figures once. I can cite one volunteer, who has shopped 112 times for two separate households. And there are many, many like that. So what sort of assistance was requested? Well, prescriptions collected, both medical and dental, shopping from supermarkets, both local and further afield, vaccination transport, donations from people's homes to food banks, goods from the garden centre, IT help, transport to hospital appointments, buddy, sorry, phone buddy support, hot meals delivered, cakes baked and delivered, installing new televisions, topping up cards for utility meters, dog walking, visiting the post office, helping book online vaccinations. Oh, and trips to buy more incontinence pads than you would know what to do with. Oh, and a warm urine sample to the doctors. Listen to her, I can hear you thinking, but please do, because it wasn't me that did all this. We may have been the people facilitating it, but it was you, you, the residents and workers of Arundel, that rose to this challenge and supported one another. You should be very proud of yourselves. West Sussex County Council sent me an email fairly early on during the epidemic and asked if they could talk about us during a presentation at a meeting, as we were the perfect example of what should have been happening. The community had come together, and it came together at the first hurdle. Having spoken with people in other local towns and villages, I can assure you that we had this up and running a long time before others. I had a lovely phone call the other day from an 83-year-old lady, who was fever-pitched, because her shopping volunteer for many, many months and family were taking her to see the tulips in the castle gardens. She called me after the visit, positively beaming. She described the oversized tulips and their hues in detail, and the colour of the sun glimmering through the threatening clouds. She told me about the delicious tasting coffee that she drank in the outdoor café with the family. She said that they are such a nice family, and that she is so happy that she has met them. Good does come out of bad. One of the volunteers on our list offers IT support to those shielding. He very kindly went in to help an elderly couple who had recently heard about Zoom, but were totally unable to install it themselves. Your volunteer went straight in to see them, and by 7pm that evening, they were speaking and seeing their family and grandchildren in France for the first time in many, many months. Even more good was coming out of dark times. One of your volunteers phoned me to ask when his 90-year-old lady would be going for her second jab. He really wanted to take her. He said that from the moment she had got into the car the first time, they talked and talked and laughed and laughed. I did ask him if he was leading her astray, but he assured me that it was her taking the lead. Another lady has thanked the Community Support Hub profusely, because without the help that has been given in all sorts of ways, she would have been unable to stay at home and in the town she loves. One of our early requests from a volunteer was from a lady who was self-isolating due to a variety of health complications. She desperately needed someone to shop for her, who would understand her strict diet and buy what she needed, rather than what they thought she needed. A volunteer with caring experience was the perfect answer, and the lady being assisted rang me every week to say thank you. Another gentleman had a knock on the door from his volunteer, who had sensed that he was feeling down, and so she had baked a cake and dropped it around. He rang me in tears with happiness. Lives have been lost in Arundel, good friends to many of us. But those left have and are feeling supported by the people of this town. New friends have been made, and old friends rekindled. Now, the epidemic is far from over, and we can't see the path ahead with any clarity. But St Nicholas Church would like you to know that we are here for the duration, working alongside yourselves and the other churches. Now, you'll be relieved to know I'm going to pop you back over to Father David.
Thank you, Fiona. I have witnessed firsthand the terrible pain and hurt that has been caused by this pandemic. I have dealt with bereaved families. But I have also seen firsthand an amazing amount of good, of neighbours truly loving their neighbours. And that is a wonderful thing, and I'm terribly proud of what together we have and are still accomplishing. But I would like to state openly and publicly that none of this would have been possible without all the wonderful volunteers. I really do salute them, they have done an amazing job. And I would also like to thank publicly Fiona, who throughout all of this has been prepared truly to go the extra mile. Thank you to all of them. Thank you.
Canon David, Fiona, thank you very much for that. Do we have any questions or anything anybody would like, you know, to say at this stage, or contribute, or any thoughts to offer before I let these good people go? Please. Oh, sorry, hang on, we'll get Lesley on her skates.
I'd like to just say thank you to Fiona, because we were on the receiving end of the volunteers, actually, and helped us out when we were in a real pickle getting to a vaccination appointment, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Okay. Fiona, Canon David, thank you very much, and thank you for everything you've done for Arundel. See, thank you. We're now going to hear from the 371 billion pound man. There was a report from a Swiss merchant bank in the Financial Times at the weekend, which said that the economic value of pollinators globally was 371 billion pounds a year. I went into their website to find out. They'd calculated it by, if pollinators stop pollinating crops around the world, that we would lose 371 billion pounds worth of crops a year. We would also lose a vast amount of human life. But being a bank, they didn't actually spend much time worrying about that. So I'm now going to ask Nick Field, who has been the author of the Bee Project since it started in Arundel, to come and tell us where we are. Nick?
That was an interesting response then, when Tony said 371 billion pound man. I think a few eyebrows were raised. I wish it was. Anyway, thank you very much to Tony and the town council for inviting me to come along and speak tonight. Those of you who know me know that I can waffle on about this subject for many hours, so I promise you I'm not going to do that this evening. You're going to get the condensed version. The Arundel Bee Project is an umbrella title for a number of different activities that have got three basic goals. First one, as you would expect, is an ecological and environmental goal. The second part is, there's a social element. And the third part is promotional. The ecological side is fairly straightforward. I think most of us have read in the newspapers and magazines over the last couple of years about the effects that our current lifestyles are having on pollinators, not just in the UK, but globally. And there's some really shocking figures out there. I think it was Germany that in the last 10 years have lost something like 70% of their pollinators, huge number. In this country, we've had declines, of course, we've had species that are going extinct. We've also lost over 90% of our wildflower meadows since the last war. And that has quite a serious effect on the habitat for these creatures. So the idea behind the project came about, really, a couple of years ago. I became a beekeeper, and like lots of people who start a new hobby, became very enthusiastic about it, and still am. And at the same time, Andy Batty and others in the town were running the Love Arundel survey and research into the town and what the town needed to prosper and go forwards. And I went along to a number of those meetings and looked at, you know, where there are opportunities, where my passion for beekeeping could... could be used for the benefit of the town. And that's really where this whole thing started from. I started talking to a number of organisations and we had a meeting shortly before everything started locking down for Covid unfortunately. But we had a meeting in the town hall where we had probably, I think it was about thirty, thirty-five people came along. And those people were representatives from the Town Council, the District Council, the County Council, South Downs National Park, the Castle, Norfolk State, Angring Estate, Bee Friendly Trust and a whole plethora of other organisations. And the great thing was that we had a gathering of quite diverse people, but they all said, yes, this is something they wanted to get involved in. And we talked about a number of different ideas. And what we came up with in the first instance was on the ecological side, obviously what we need to do is to make the habitat better for pollinators. You know, the title of the project is the Bee Project, but it actually includes all sorts of pollinating insects. It's wider than that. I've created a community apery with the help of Aron District Council and the orchard at Herrington Field. That's been beautifully fenced off. We've got some hives operating down there at the moment. And the idea of that is once hopefully summer comes, supposedly just round the corner, and the bees have settled in properly, people will be able to come down, we'll suit them up. You can look inside a beehive, you can see what it's all about. We'll take them apart. We have to do that on a weekly basis at this time of year anyway, and you can learn about bees. If you don't want to come down again, if that satisfies your curiosity, that's absolutely fine. If you want to get further involved, great. If eventually you want to become a beekeeper, wonderful. And we can put you into contact with people that run courses and so on and so forth, so that you can find out what you have to do. We're also looking to improve the habitat. Those of you who have been down to the station in the last couple of days may have noticed there's some activity going down there. We're actually wildflowering the area round by the taxi rank going up to the A twenty-seven and also the walk cycleway. They're taking off all the weeds and grass and everything at the moment and seeding that. So in a couple of months' time, that should look absolutely incredible. The idea behind that is that eventually, and we're talking with West Sussex County Council and their Highways Department and various other people, the two main roundabouts, the grass verges, some of the grass verge at Mill Road, will be turned over to wildflowers. That has several purposes. One, it creates a much better habitat for pollinators. That's fairly straightforward. Secondly, it makes the town look great. One of the things that came out from the Love Arundel research was that people wanted to see a greening of Arundel. They wanted to see more flowers. So that's one aspect of it. We can do the wildflower verges. And thirdly, actually saves an awful lot of money. There was a campaign, I think it was about six or seven years ago now, in Rotherham, in the north of the country, where they wildflowered a dual carriage array running into the town, seven miles of it. Looks absolutely fantastic. They kept it going. Looks absolutely amazing. And it has saved them, I think it's twenty-seven thousand pounds a year on mowing costs since then. It's much, much cheaper to have wildflowers than it is to have cut grass. All you do is, you know, you cut it at the beginning of the season, you let it grow. The wildflowers look fantastic. They eventually die back. They reseed. You cut once and remove it and that's it. So it saves a lot of money, which of course at the end of the day comes from all our pockets. We're also looking at putting wildflowers actually into the town. Angring Estate have very kindly donated a number of old cattle troughs. There's actually one down in the town now, which I'll explain in a minute. And the idea is that these will be located throughout the town and planted. Obviously, there's a historical connection that the cattle market used to take place in the high street anyway, so it's quite a nice thing to have there. And we're going through the process of actually getting the, all the planning applications and everything in to allow for that. So that will probably be next year before that happens. But that's on the agenda. We've also created the Pollinators Garden, which is opposite the museum. It's the area where the old toilet blocks were that were demolished a few years ago and had been fenced in. Fencing's now gone for that. We're going to have an official opening fairly soon and there'll be some signage up there. But Martin Duncan from the Castle and his team gave their time and effort and plants and have created a wonderful garden down there, which is, I think if you've seen it, you'll agree, is a really great addition to the town. So that's the sort of environment, some of the environmental things we're doing. On the social side, what we want to do is get as many people involved doing different projects of their own that can come under this sort of general title. We've already had some great ideas and some great action actually. Martin Alderton, who runs the tours in the town, he got together with three of the local schools and issued the children with wildflower seeds and has been running a project where they've been planting those, photographing the results and going into the future will be, you know, photographing and finding out the insects and everything that will come in. So it's great. It's got the children involved. We've had paintings produced for the use of the campaign. We've had embroidered bags produced. We've just had some window stickers produced and as you leave, if you want to take them, please do. These are just static cling things, just saying, you know, we support the Arundel Bee Project because we want to get the word out there. We want people to get involved. If that means putting out, you know, a flower pot with some flowers on it, that's great. If you've got some spare land, if you want to get involved in anything else, if you've got something that's a particular passion of yours that you could think could fit in somehow, then hopefully the Arundel Bee Project can help you, whether it's through, you know, a small amount of financial support, putting you in contact with the right people or whatever. We really want this to become a town event. You know, one of the things that you see in numerous places is that, you know, authorities will give something to a town or produce something for a town and it's absolutely fantastic, but it's sort of, there it is. It's a one-way transaction. We don't really want to try and do that. We want to try and get a two-way transaction where people come forward with their ideas and we can support and can help them. So we really want to get the town behind this. On the promotional side, and again, this goes back to the Love Arundel campaign. It's fairly obvious, I think, to most people that Arundel is a tourist town. Whether people like it or not, we're dependent on tourists. The coffee shops, the restaurants and so on and so forth couldn't keep going just with the people that live here. They need more business. And Arundel needs to promote itself. It needs to promote itself as much as any other place does. You know, we all know that high streets are struggling at the moment and particularly after the pandemic. So we need to get more people here. And one of the conversations that I had with the Bee Friendly Trust led to a further conversation with DEFRA. And DEFRA are keen on the idea that we, by basically achieving a number of different things, we get the title, the official title, the UK's first bee-friendly town. It's something they are looking then to roll out through the rest of the country, having bee-friendly towns, but will be the first. And there's quite a lot of publicity I think we can get from that. As we said earlier, there's been an awful lot in the press over the last few years about the environment and about pollinators. And if we can achieve this title, then that's going to be for the good of Arundel. I remember when I moved here seven years ago and I said to friends of mine in London that I was moving to Arundel, I was met with blank looks. I found it absolutely amazing for a town that's fifty miles away, that a lot of people don't know about the town and what a fantastic place it is. So, you know, if we can bump up the name and get it, get more exposure for the town, we will get more people coming here, we will get more people spending money and the town will thrive as a result. Going forwards, as I say, we want to look at a number of different things. I've been contacted now by quite a few, quite a few diverse organisations that want to become involved. Andy Battie and I, see Andy is here this evening. Andy Battie and I went down to Ford Prison a few weeks ago and they gave us a fantastic tour around, showed us everything. We went into the woodwork rooms, they've got amazing facilities down there, and low and behold, were a set of beehives that they'd made. So we want to see if we can work with them. We want to see if we can actually set up a whole load of beehives throughout the area that work on a cooperative basis where we produce honey, we sell it as Arundel Cooperative Honey or whatever. And the money from that comes back into the project. It comes back to support social causes and is to the benefit of everybody. So really, it's, this is a project that we really would like the town to embrace, get everybody involved in whatever way they can, big or small, and hopefully it will help to put Arundel, you know, on the map. It will help to improve things for Arundel and it will help to improve the environment for pollinators and for wildlife in general. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? No. Okay, if anybody wants to talk about it at the end, I'll be here till the end anyway, so thank you very much.
So there's no lack of opportunity for doing things in Arundel if you're not working with the St Nicholas Volunteer Hub and you decide you haven't got time to fit into a working group, then you can go and become a supporter of the Bee Project with Nick. Or there's yet another opportunity coming up. One of the things that has happened really as a genuine community initiative is the Arundel Dementia Initiative and it has battled its way through lockdown and is now beginning to flourish here in Arundel. And so I'm delighted that we have tonight Jackie and Mandy, who are going to speak to us about the Arundel Dementia Initiative. Ladies.
Good evening. Thank you Tony for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd just like to share with you how come I'm here now, talking to you about making Arundel dementia-friendly. My day job is working with the Co-op Store in Arundel, working with the community and I'm a link between the community and the store. And doing this job in December two thousand and nineteen, I had the pleasure of working with Sage House. Now you may be aware of Sage House, but if you're not, it's one of the most impressive places I've seen for support for people who have dementia. It really is a life changer. And when I was speaking to them, they happened to mention that the people of Arundel, for some reason, don't use their services very much. So when I came back to Arundel, I made a few inquiries and it would seem that Arundel were interested in dementia-friendly areas, but were just starting the process. So at that time, we put together a meeting that took place in March two thousand and twenty and it sounds a bit like my previous speaker. There was about thirty people there, all very keen to do something, to help our beautiful town. But then, a week later, as we all know, Covid stepped in and things had to go on a back burner. We did manage to get one dementia friend's training session in in September, which again was populated by a lot of people and we even had a waiting list. Then came lockdown number three. But I tell you, now May seventeenth has passed, we're on that sailing boat again. We are determined to do something for the people that are in Arundel, that have dementia, and also their carers, but also for the people that visit us. And one of the things we'd like to do, in fact, I did take the trouble to look at the Alzheimer's Society's description of what a dementia-friendly town is because you may or may not know, but if you could bear with me, I'm just going to read you their description of what a dementia-friendly town is. A dementia-friendly community is a town where people with dementia are understood. They're respected. They're supported. In a dementia-friendly community, people will be aware of and understand dementia so that people with dementia can continue to live in the way they would want to live in a community they want to live in. Dementia-friendly communities are vital in helping people live with dementia and remain part of our community. And to that end, I'd like to pass you on to my colleague, Mandy, who is a dementia nurse. Thank you, Mandy.
You've just taken my first sentence. So hello everybody. My name is Mandy Kane. I'm a registered mental health nurse and I work for Sussex Partnership. I specialise in dementia and I work for proactive care. So once people receive a diagnosis for dementia, going through the assessment process and after a ten-week follow-up, they're discharged back to their GP and into the care of proactive care. I cover nine surgeries, including Arundel. I became a dementia friend, went on to do the champion training and since lockdown have been delivering webinar sessions. And I've done work with all of the Aron surgeries. Arundel is next on my list. So all of the surgeons have become dementia friends. We've looked at the environments within the surgeries. We've made very small changes. It's the very small changes that make the big difference. For instance, one of the changes has been, often in a surgery, there's been a big black mat in front of reception. Now to someone with dementia, that can look quite scary. It could look like a hole. So they've all been removed or they've changed colour and that's made a big difference. And also people in the waiting room, rather than being called out, "Mr Smith, come to room nine", they're actually collected from the waiting room and taken to room nine and returned back to the waiting room. Again, it's just a small change that can make a big difference. So through becoming a dementia champion, I then became involved in the Aron Dementia Action Alliance. There's lots of different terminology to understand and I'm now co-chair. The alliance achieved the key aspects, which I'll explain in a minute. In October two thousand and nineteen, we were actually awarded dementia-friendly community status for Aron. And there's the certificate. Just a few figures. It's estimated there'll be one million people with a dementia diagnosis by twenty twenty-five. Here in West Sussex, the highest number of people in the country live with dementia and that is predicted to rise by thirty-five percent to around twenty-two and a half thousand people by twenty thirty. And dementia friends-wise in West Sussex is currently thirty-two thousand five hundred. So how do you set up a dementia-friendly community? Well, as I've said, Aron has already achieved that status. And for Arundel, you've got two options. Both of them are as worthy as the other one. Already we're in connection with Jackie and the Lido, so they have joined into our dementia-friendly community. And now we've started talking about what Arundel can do itself. So you can either set up your own dementia-friendly community by going through the steps that you need to take. And it's not a quick step. It'll take a good amount of commitment from the community and you have to kick all the boxes. To do the dementia friend, so because Aron is already a dementia-friendly community, you are now part of Aron dementia-friendly community. If Arundel wants to be its own and go out on its own, then what you need to do is set up a dementia action alliance. That is your starting point. Now that will involve nominating a chair, a co-chair, an admin person, a social media person, representatives from across the eight key areas, which include community, voluntary and faith. and faith, transport, health and social care, arts, culture, leisure and recreation, businesses and shops, housing, emergency services, children, young people and students. For Arundel, we managed to tick six of the eight boxes, and at that stage, we could then apply for the status and were awarded it. So if you think of Arundel as a town, you can easily cover all of those aspects. You've got the schools, we were just about to do some dementia friends, children-friendly sessions, but unfortunately Covid came, we will rearrange them. You have the police service, you could get them involved. Obviously, lots of lovely good shops and businesses, you've got arts and culture, you've got the Lido, health and social care, I'll personally be working with the GP surgery and trying to get them to come on board, and you've got your community voluntary and your faith services. So it is achievable. So why is it important? So people with dementia have told us that 63% feel their condition is not understood by retailers. 28% of people have stopped going out of their house. Now, this was pre-Covid, I would imagine these figures will be higher than this now. 22% of people have stopped exercising, 16% have stopped using transport, 23% of people stopped doing their own shopping, and 9% of people said they had to give up everything. So how do you go about getting your dementia-friendly status? You get together a group of people, and you determine what your local actions for your organisations will be. This has to come from a spread across the community, it can't be one or two people's jobs, it has to come from all walks of life. Also, if one of those people that are left doing most of the job actually leave or change area, then your alliance will crash, so you need to have commitment from across the board. You get on board the organisation and the businesses who have decided they want to receive recognition, and by doing that, if we pick the post office, for instance, he's already really, really keen to be involved. He did attend the dementia friend session that I ran at the Lido, and we're going to do another one for his other staff. You then look at the environment and see whether there's any changes that you can make, there's an environmental checklist that the Alzheimer's Society issue. So it could be overload of signage, can we simplify your signage? Is it clear how you get to the TIL? Is it clear how you use the TIL? Do you need help? When people have had their dementia friend sessions, you get a lovely badge, and that Jackie's borrowed mine, so you might just be wearing your badge so people can be aware that you've received the training and you'll be a little bit more understanding, hopefully. And once you've achieved and ticked all the boxes, you then are working towards, and this is actually last year's, because this year's hasn't been printed, not sure if you can see that, but it's a sticker that goes in the window, and that shows your recognition. If you went to Rustington last week, it was Dementia Action Awareness Week, and a lot of the shops are very keen on the initiative, and it was on Friday, denim for dementia, and a lot of the windows all had denim window displays, including the library. So it is achievable. And to be honest, from my job and working in the dementia-friendly community, there's only benefits to be made, especially, as the Bee person said, gathering tourism. Horsham has got a dementia-friendly status and is quite well on the map, and I'm sure if Arundel could get that status, that would also encourage certain groups to come and visit you more. And going back to planting wildflowers, I was wondering about actually putting forget-me-nots, perhaps, around the town, as that is the logo for dementia-friendly. I think that might have covered most things.
The only thing I wanted to say, really, was the best bit, is that we've recently opened a cafe, well, it's not a cafe actually, it's called the Community Cupper, a Levenses Community Cupper, and it's there for everyone, but it's especially there for people that need a bit of company in a safe environment, dementia sufferers and their carers. I had a man, for example, came on our inaugural meeting last week, Tony, and he came and he said, "I'm coming here to do a recce, to see if I think it's a safe place for my mum, because she lives on her own, doesn't go anywhere, my sister and myself go in every other day, we do her lunch, and she sees nobody." I'm pleased to say, this week, in the torrential rain, he brought her, and I have a wonderful picture of a smiling person who's just happy to be out in a safe environment, and her children know that they're in a safe area, enjoying her coffee and her cake. So if you've got time on a Monday between 11:00 and 1:00, you'd like to come and see what we're doing, or you'd like to volunteer, or you'd like to bring a cake, or just pop along and see, it's in the, it's in Arundel Lido Marquee, and you'd be very welcome. Thank you very much for listening. I forgot to say. Would you like me to ask any questions? Has anybody got any questions they've got for us? We will be around afterwards if you've got any and you want to save them for then. There's also some leaflets at the back that you might like to take, and if you feel you there's something that you'd like to do or want to do, please fill it in and we will get back to you. Thank you for your time, thank you.
There's just one more thing, we are going to be booking another dementia friends session at the Lido, and the bookings are to go through the Lido, please, and it'll be after the Levenses at 1:30 on the 28th of June, and it'll be an open-air one, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Mandy. Just two footnotes on that. Sharon Blakely, the Chair of the Chamber of Commerce, is unable to be with us tonight, but we are working together to get the Chamber of Commerce and Arundel's businesses and retailers harnessed to this dementia-friendly Arundel project, and Sharon is certainly personally committed to doing that, which is great. And the second thing is that any charitable funds which the council raises this year, and there will be a collection when you leave, will be given to the Arundel Dementia Initiative, so anything we raise this year will go to. And I think, I think that before opening up for general questions, I can't help thinking, listening to this evening, when I hear about what Arundel has done to support residents during the Covid pandemic, and when I listen to Nick talking about making us the first Bee-friendly town, and when I listen to Jackie and Mandy talking about Arundel becoming dementia-friendly, it does make me think that this is a quite remarkable town we live in. So thank you very much for what I have personally found to be an inspiring evening, and I hope that other people have felt that too. Right, we've been sent two questions, haven't we? Who's got the question? You got the questions, Carolyn? Yes, come and read them out, come and read the questions out, I'll try and answer.
What steps are Arundel Town Council taking to remove the camper vans in Mill Road? And assuming this will be done, what steps will Arundel Town Council take to prevent the camper vans returning to Mill Road?
Can I have this? Thank you very much, Carolyn. That's Carolyn, our town clerk, for those who haven't met her. Let's deal with the second question first. What is Arundel Town Council's preferred route on the A27? If I go back to 2019, we were confronted by six options from Highways England, and it was pretty certain they were going to do something. They colour-coded their options. One of their options was beige, and that consisted of taking the A27 through Arundel, enlarging the roundabout at Ford Road and making it a dual carriageway. They also had the blue route, which I thought personally was absolutely grotesque, which was they were going to make it a dual carriageway and build a flyover over the Ford roundabout. And I have no doubt, and the council had no doubt, that those two options were highly destructive to Arundel as a heritage town in West Sussex. And so basically, we looked at the other options and we opted for magenta. We opted for magenta as a council. Most residents in Arundel who voted with Highways England opted for magenta also. Arundel District Council opted for magenta. West Sussex County Council opted for magenta. Highways England looked at all the options and they came back with the grey route. We had no part in the grey route, we understand they have adopted it because it completely avoids going through the South Downs National Park, that's the explanation that they've given. From our point of view, what mattered was getting a bypass for Arundel and not getting an enlargement of the road that currently goes right through the middle of the town. And now, I think it's in the hands of Highways England, and Andrew Griffith, our MP, and the Town Council are both asking Highways England to do everything they can to mitigate the effect of this bypass on other communities. But the one thing that mattered to us is not getting a bigger road dividing Arundel in half, which is what we have at the moment, and which would have become even more aggravated otherwise. The second one, camper vans, well, we have been in dialogue for the last year with West Sussex County Council about camper vans. We have been in dialogue with the police about camper vans. The police can do nothing about camper vans unless West Sussex give us a traffic regulation order. And what we're asking for, for Arundel, is a traffic regulation order that stops people parking on Mill Road between 10pm and 7am in camper vans or caravans. We have no problem with camper vans coming to Arundel, we are trying to develop this year better parking facilities for them off the road, but we didn't build Mill Road and we didn't actually plant those new lime trees in the most beautiful promenade in Arundel to have things the size of buses, literally, parking there for weeks on end. And I met camper van owners last year who told me that they'd actually let their houses out on RMB for the summer to live on Mill Road, and we don't want Mill Road to be an unofficial campsite for anybody. So West Sussex are reluctant to do this, we are lobbying West Sussex, we need probably 25 to 30 people in Arundel who will write a letter to West Sussex every week for the next year, asking them to do something about it. And I mean a letter, not an email, because Andrew Griffith, our MP, pointed out that he gets hundreds of emails, and he just deals with them, they're easy to deal with. We can all deal with emails, you can delete them, file them, lose them, respond to them. He gets eight letters a week, written in ink, in an envelope with a stamp, brought by the postal worker through his letterbox, and those are the ones that he has to work on. And so what we've started doing, in a very small way, is writing to West Sussex regularly, and if we could actually get a number of Arundel people who each week would pick up their Basildon Bond writing pad and write that letter and send it, then I think we would, we would end up in a situation where our lobbying had a lot more effect. So I think that's what we're doing with camper vans, they're welcome here, but they're not welcome to live on Mill Road as a campsite. And I'm ignoring the people, you know, there's a tiny minority who foul the ditches and do terrible things, you know, we can ignore them, you always get a minority like that in any group of people, camper van owners are totally decent as a group, but we don't want them living on Mill Road through the summer of 2022, 23, 24, we've got to deal with it. And we need West Sussex, they're the only people who can grant us the traffic regulation order we need, so we've got to work on, lobby on them for Arundel on our behalf. Good, do we have any other questions tonight? Nick? We get them from our worthy town clerk at the town hall, Carolyn Baines. Carolyn will send the details to anybody, so, I mean, seriously, think about it, I mean, it's a pain writing letters, you don't have to write, you can actually type the letter, what you do have to do, you can type the letter, you can print it off, but put it in an envelope, put a stamp on it, and send it through the Royal Mail. Oh, sorry, I've got to get your Lesley's sprinting boots on.
I was just wondering what the reason was that West Sussex County Council weren't listening and helping.
Who knows? I think, I think Arundel is misunderstood as a community, I think Andy, Andy, so next you may agree with this, I think Arundel is seen as being a community of 3,500 people, 1,700 houses, so in the context of West Sussex, Arundel, you know, it's a tiny, tiny little place, what they don't realise is that we get up to a million visitors a year. So in every sense, Arundel is an anomaly, you know, we get more traffic through this town, we get more visitors in this town, and yet, you know, we're really a large village, which is the strength of our community. So I think, I think, I don't think West Sussex have ever really got their mind around what Arundel is, and it's a very, very special place, but I don't, I mean, that's pure speculation on my part, I don't know. Had a deathly hush in the cathedral tonight. Any thoughts on anything that, you know, you've heard from Jackie and Mandy, or from Nick, or from Carolyn, David and Fiona tonight? Comments? Hopes and expectations for 2021? Or just an urgent desire to go home? Right, well, if there is no other business, anyone? Good, well, thank you very much for coming to this town meeting, I am sincerely hoping that our town meeting next year, we will be in our own crowded Athalie chamber, but thank you very much for coming tonight, and thank you very much to our speakers who have really, I think, given us a lot to inspire us about our life here in Arundel. Thank you.